So this is why we're asking for the M two versus just the M one area. So, um, we've had a discussion in the city of Martinsville, they have no concern asking for the street zoning. We have done that. The night of the meeting for zoning commission, there was no membership of the public president that spoke for or against this. So it was recommended approval, it's coming forward with the recommendation for us to provide all the indicators.
You have concerns in the board's improvisation? But the main motion go out, oh, you're right, sorry. What if the motion is second?
McIntyre, I'm on it now.
Aye.
Peter?
Aye. Okay, we're now in our regular meeting. For your additional comments with concerns, I'd like to make a motion, uh, to approve rezoning application for land from May one. M one, and that he seemed to come to the municipal district as submitted by John Whitehead. And I don't know if you can wait at seven for three or something else, but including my motion to wait the second and third reads. A motion and second call please.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye. That motion, motion is approved. Next item on our agenda is a public hearing for review and approval of the final platform. I have a made a motion before the hearing. I have a motion in the second half of the whole call, please.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Um, this one, uh, allegation was presented by Zach LaPage Mormon of sixty-three twenty Southeast Sixtieth Street, Carolina, Iowa, and Matt and Wendy McGinnis of one-two-zero-two-four Highway S twenty-three, Indiana, Iowa. They're submitting the final plan for Grand Green Valley subdivision. Um, all items according to our subdivision ordinance have been completed. This has been approved by the county engineer on the entrances. Um, the city of Hartford did waive their right to review on May fifteenth of two thousand and twenty-three. Um, this went before the zoning commission on July tenth, and they are recommending approval for the subdivision.
Okay, on random. Anything else from the public that would like to speak on this matter? Your please, uh, here. Got a motion inside the role, please.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye. Now having a regular meeting.
Make a motion to. Of reason. And final flat for Green Valley submitted by Zach Norman. And by Wendy McGinnis. Waives of second and third readings.
Second. Yeah, we have a motion second, roll call.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye. That motion is approved. Hey, I'm under the board, uh, his public hearing review, consider what possible approval of zoning ordinance updates. As set out in the comparative land use regulation resolution approved on May seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. I'm a motion for the public hearing. I have a motion to second, roll call, please.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye. We're now public hearing.
Morning, good morning.
Morning.
I first want to thank the zoning commission, MSA, our consulting group, the board of supervisors, my staff in the zoning department, and the public for their input and all the hard work and dedication to the temporary land use regulation and the process. Countless hours have been spending in these revisions, and we do acknowledge that there will be future revisions and everything needed as we work through the comprehensive plan process and zoning ordinance. The temporary land use regulations were enacted for the safety and future development and address those concerns. These revisions are a small part of the figures process. Um, last Wednesday, the zoning commission called us, um, special meeting for their, um, to hear the revisions. And zoning commission recommended five hits and grow to recommend people of those changes to you. Um, there wasn't a whole lot of discussion amongst the zoning commission that they, like I said, they'd spent countless hours in it. They knew what was going to happen to approve. So, um, we are here today, um, MSA is here. And now there's public hearings, so I'm going to turn it over to Sarah at MSA.
Morning, sir.
From the name, how are you all? So as you know, in August of two thousand and twenty-two, Warren County released an R M P for the Warren County Confidence and plan and zoning and subdivision ordinance updates. And while the initial intent was to update the zoning and subdivision ordinances following the comprehensive plan update, uh, we realized that the ordinance is not currently aligned with the current comprehensive plan. So your ordinances right now are from nineteen eighty. And your comprehensive plan was updated in two thousand and two, but the ordinances are never revised to match the current plan. So when we started the process, we recognized that the ordinances are lacking in time by a couple of months. And this initial revision was intended to bring the ordinances updated from the plan. For the continuing process, we're working with both of the versions that would have been done in two thousand or two. And so the ordinances compared to the existing conference and what we made was to help, yeah, yes, or maybe. So, uh, while Warren County is excited to see the growth that you've seen, uh, the current ordinance is just wanting to create a growth. One of your friends was starting to create data for me and so to equip now, yeah, one location, all somebody trying to raise more to help. Here the ordinance changes, Warren County opted to adopt a super early regulation while the county worked to drive regulations that are in the best interest of the world there. That correct. Uh, many residents have been in support of these revisions that serve the chairman of Warren County and help protect the town's residents. Uh, land use regulation was voted into that probably second, as you know, and, uh, began to make that. And the intention was to revise chapters forty, forty-one, two, thirty, three, of the Warren County code of laws. And to revise the definition of ordinance to maintain a primary conflict with one another. Um, so it's meant that the warranties of the department, you call and, uh, like I mentioned, that multiple items that aren't warranted today. Uh, and we, we so much appreciate all of this, this, that, projects. But where you are, the recommendations revisions. And, um, if you have any questions, then I can just, uh, next time.
You can hit on the, the whatever this is that the board supervisors, uh, will no longer have that going to wave the, the concrete paving requirement. So is that ultimately being that the, there are no, um, options for somebody that wants to maybe perhaps develop a subdivision, but doesn't want whatever is basically just what, what this document is basically saying is there is no way of a process available to the public.
There is no way for parcels where paving is required, but paving is not required in all districts. So one of the major loopholes that we recognize was that there are six current residential districts in Warren County. And then of agriculture, there are seven districts in which people could develop residential. And, um, between the language of different ordinances, there got to seven of those in a four-year agricultural district. Uh, what we did was revise those residential districts for, so there's two rural residential districts and two residential districts. In the rural residential districts, there is still the ability to do a subdivision that would not require paving. That would be for small scale development. And for larger scale developments, that would require paving, and those would be pushed towards the R one and R two districts in which paving is required. So there are options throughout the ordinance. There's also a more clear kind, um, definition of a street credit and that there are a lot areas are in these districts. Uh, so we feel that these districts allow for better plan development and speed for development here on the town. Uh, they still an option without a moment of doubt in the paving ordinance, not necessary.
The only other question I have is, uh, in the subdivision. Subdivision we're talking about today, the nine eleven commission is, um, becomes responsible for naming streets versus the zoning commission. Was there, what was the logic behind that or what's?
The zoning commission's everything to the streets. They've always worked with Doug McCaslin in the nine-one-one office to name those. But it was, so it was just updating that portion of the ordinance to state that they would work with the nine-one-one office on that versus the zoning office. Cause he has a certain grid for street names and, and so that they need to work with him and so he just updated that portion.
And that's primarily to address the safety. Having some kind of members who service and being able to identify for common citizens.
That's good. Okay. Those are my other questions that I have on this.
If you have any other questions?
All right, I just want to go see if I have a procedure question to come up. Um, as we're looking at these subdivision regulations, then we have the zoning ordinance revisions. So we're really doing the two step process here. Would you want us through again from a procedural standpoint, whether this is a mix, two things related to one another?
Yeah, so if there's a certain amount of splits in the resident, the rural residential districts or the agricultural districts, um, that triggers a subdivision. So the subdivision ordinance that process will only be used in the case that there are the splits recommended for subdivision. So the subdivision ordinance revisions were to reflect the changes to the zoning ordinance. So that when that process is adopted, they comply with one another and there aren't differing procedures in the two ordinances. So the subdivision ordinance is largely followed what we already discussed and worked through in the zoning ordinances. Uh, the provisions to chapter forty-six are to comply pretty much with chapters forty-three, forty-two.
So basically, we're making the two mesh together.
Right.
And.
Yep.
Just want to make sure. Not operating the other zones here.
No, that was our intention was to bring these things to be more aligned and that we feel that this version will help the process be a much smoother first thought and a lot of officials will be worried. And as we stated before, we recognize that there will still be recommendations for revision following the comprehensive plan update. These were to bring up to date the current comprehensive plan and the primary revisions here. Where a few definition changes, a few additional definitions in restructuring the rural residential districts, then that they, um, are easier to process. And that there are fewer loopholes within all the processes.
Your, your definition section, instead of not applicable, that means we didn't really have a definition for these in our previous documents, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Which it seems kind of odd when you look at what a major subdivision. What we're, we're trying to define things as major subdivisions, subdivisions and minor subdivisions, which is something new. It's kind of part of our new plan, so put you new definitions. Subdivisions are three or more lots. Major subdivisions are five and minor subdivisions are four lots, so. I thought it was interesting that we haven't defined, um, certain things in previous documents that now are, you know, pretty prevalent. However, like, um, I think this is definitely, and it's obvious this is the need, this is the need of the process. And I have more on that than the zoning commission, uh, and, and our Warren County's Department and MSA. Uh, very seldom do we get a hundred percent consensus, consensus on, on these major decisions over time. But in this particular case, um, for the most part, I think I've heard from our engineering department and from MSA and from our zoning commission and from our zoning department, we're all pretty much in consensus that absolutely this is needed. And there may be some question for how specific details, but for the most part, uh, I'm real pleased with the process. You, I think I've tried to compliment MSA on bringing this together and communicating to us, you know, what, what we even think about and what's important long term. And so I just want to say thank you to MSA and everybody really for being open-minded, willing to have these discussions, taking all the time that we take and, uh, spending, uh, it's been a nice to get part of so that.
We appreciate the work you've done. Thank you so much.
Uh, just a further kind of question here. As far as these, um, provisions and regulations may not be in all sorts of things, actually being established in purpose, how do these compare or relate to, uh, how we use, where do we fit within the school or the, you know, central island area and adopting these types of provisions and provisions?
That's a good question. So the first workshop that we did with the zoning commission, we started by, uh, analyzing comparison charts where we pull the definitions in ordinances from surrounding counties and counties of similar patterns in central Iowa as well as other areas in Iowa. Um, so this is kind of a good medium between the rural characteristics and the urban grounds that Warren County is seeing. And we think that these ordinances will help to balance that by allowing development in the areas that wanted and needed, and also allowing for, uh, less tense development, but still long development in the more rural areas.
So in other words, we are being very consistent in terms of our favorite, uh, areas here in central Iowa.
Yes, there is a, uh, a vast scale of things like lot sizes. There are places that have minimum agricultural lot sizes verified, and there are some places that have a small too. So we took things like that into account and tried to make, uh, a nice range of different little lot sizes. And the various baselines of the law regulations that you see, so that, uh, development has a place in Warren County.
So, oh, in this procedure, question. So by adopting these, uh, items we thought of today, will we be coming back to visit these items again as part of the bigger picture? Or at least the seven ones that are going to be, these are complete now? Where are we in the process?
It is not like the ordinance is like a coffin should be a living document. So as they need be, I would recommend those changes be made. Um, we already have in our project scope to recommend revisions to these ordinances again following the cop and update. So we're looking at about ten months out from now to start working on those recommendations. And, um, it, it will be revisited to answer your questions to.
Yeah, that's, that's what I, I just want to make sure the public understands, third, what's going to happen. But these, while they're adopting these, uh, if we choose to adopt these today, that doesn't mean that they're cut in stone and they're going to be this way forever.
Correct.
That the public will be revisited as part of the process, you can just try and accomplish that.
Yes, they will, they will be revisited again, uh, following the comprehensive plan update.
And we discussed, uh, we, I guess we have been talking about that a lot. Um, I guess yesterday we had pretty, pretty detailed conversation active with our zoning department. One of the options, we kind of dig around in the past to develop nice policies that align with our ordinances as we, you know, the ordinances, the code and the law, and then there's potentially in the future, you know, adopting some policies and procedures that align with that ordinance to help us define and help us navigate through circumstances that potentially we're not, we can't into, we can anticipate or a circumstance that we're going to come across. So there, there is flexibility built into that, or potentially things we can do to build flexible these requirements.
Right. Yes, and there will be recommendations within the governance of any process, applying made an act was tools to utilize that will be following the instructions.
Good.
Okay.
There, you have anything else?
I don't know.
Any other questions? So is everybody else from the public that might speak about this matter?
Yes, African fertility, what up, do it anyway. My name is Robert Darf, I live at one-six-nine-nine Warren Avenue, Norwalk, Iowa, Bible two-one-one. Um, I've been very much involved, I watch every supervisor meeting on YouTube. I try to stay in touch with what's going on. Suddenly I find out they put a, they're going to put a hold on any derivative splits that I can do on my land, which affects my livelihood. Last only meeting I got turned down because they said I was going to profit from it instead of really wanting it. I was going to sell it to somebody else. I could have lied and said I was going to build my own hold on it. Now I'm at a point where I cannot, even though I've reached out to all these people and nobody's ever, none of you guys have even returned a call. My concern, so I've written out a little formal.
Hold on, did you, did you call each of us all three?
I, I did hear you. I mean, I got emails and everything, anyway, I can contact everybody because I've been trying to get feedback or get involved. I only got involved in one meeting of this, and, um, then the next thing I know, we come into zoning meeting, and they vote for it, and it was printed ten minutes before they had gone through it. Evidently, you guys have all talked about this with it. I can't even comprehend it, I, you know, it's gotten so upset. And I sit and read through it every night trying to understand how this affects people's health and safety. I see this as they're going to take over all my land and my responsibility and my freedom. I, I love bringing families out and growing our school district. Like, you know, everybody wants ten acres that they can't afford, so they build them free acres. And then as soon as I want to go and split up one and three, even though I represented and sold, sold the land and told them exactly my wishes were, they'll go up at the zoning meeting saying, you don't want to make. I get that, that's just it. And they can do that, but at the end of the day, affordable housing is not on ten acres. Most forties do not even have a full forty. So if you're saying you want to split four tens and, and we've done it before, four tens on a certain, certain lands, that's, that's a great way to do it. But where you have good farm ground, you maybe want to install the road furniture, if you consent, have their house there, and you have the farm ground in the back and set up that eventually future development would make sense. Those homes are up against the road. They would have loved by ten acres, they would have loved if they didn't have the money. That if they were happy to live, they lived American dream, come down to a small school, let their kids play sports and do what Warren County is all about. The only affordable housing right now is in Churchville, Iowa, at a hundred thousand dollars. Everything else is two hundred thousand dollars. If the land cost for ten acres is two hundred thousand dollars or a hundred thousand dollars, still at the highest and best use of land is what we should all be doing. This should be, this is better for the taxpayers because you, you charge them a whole bunch of taxes on their home. And you only have a gravel road that they go on, they don't ask for any police service, fire service, anything out there. We're all on our own out there. Uh, we don't want curves, we don't want paved streets, we don't want natureways. We came out of the country to do what we want to do, you know, and what's appropriate in northern Warren County isn't appropriate in southern Warren County. And if I've got land, eighty acres, and I can't bring my kids back and build their own home, we got a problem. So. Thank you for listening to that. The proposed zoning changes does significantly affect property owners and the value of their land. One major concern is the reduction of the land size of the property owners can split and make it difficult for many families to afford a substantial piece of land in the country and build a home currently families who cannot afford ten acres have the option to buy three acres, enabling them to realize their dream and live together inside, and on a whole, on a separate system. No city sewer, no extra fees, much less no dumping in the river, no cities complaining that they can't afford sewer systems. Uh, by limiting this, the size of land that can be split, the families who lose the opportunity to have their own piece of rural property. This could be especially problematic in cities as they continue to grow and develop, making these smaller parcels, ten acre parcel, more challenging to develop in the future, especially in areas that are, have rapid urbanization. Making stamping land unbilled, damn, anything worse that could happen to someone's land. Moreover, some property owners who already have purchased, they're like, it's mine folks having, say, the opportunities for their family, but opposed other people coming into that. And that is because of density potential changes in very character, fear of decreased property values and more people settle nearby. However, it's crucially considered that housing is a basic need and should be accessible to all to as many families as possible. Shouldn't have to be upper edge model. Furthermore, the county government may initially appear to benefit from these changes because they increase tax bases of smaller plots, fewer public service, homeowners with smaller plots handle their own basic needs, maintain their own boundaries, separate systems. Separate disrespective at, at building, disrespective at transit. Those are not polluting our environment, those are family farms. However, it's essential to consider that long-term effects of these changes in property values and the overall well-being of the community, rapid growth in certain areas can put a strain on city governments, including difficulties in handling public stores and other services, which may handle overall growth and development. Consider this with unaccompanied areas of the county that have lower taxes, bigger yards, fewer restrictions. It becomes evident there are different approaches to balance growth and preservation. The lack of transparency, beauty and engagement in this decision-making process is another criticism. I, I obviously missed getting involved with this except for one meeting. Uh, the zoning changes appear to have been hastily approved during the events of the zoning meeting, they printed them, handed them to them, they, they heard. Unbelievable. Um, most of the public is unaware, I've talked, I posted on Facebook social media last night, I had enormous concerns thinking, what is going on? I had no idea this was going on in Warren County. These people own farms, they're all, all over, and they're working, they're at the fair. When you guys are voting through this stuff and trying to push this stuff through, very ratty, very ambitious, right? And I know I said, trying to quit zoning, you do it through Christmas, you do it through a holiday or something, but, uh, but input. So I had, I really got concerned about. Uh, I know my three sentences, uh, probably lack of transparency, community engagement. Uh, once again, to be honest, the good seeds and the potential negative effect on land values throughout the county, limitations on land size that demand larger non-built parcel may decrease coverage of the client's value. This could have a direct impact on property owners who own extensive land and service the land in the future. Additional restrictions of land size could limit families from continuing the farming tradition, consuming the American dream on their own, except over here. If so, it can make it unportable or impactful for children to return the homes of their family farm. It could disrupt the community, the rule of life and the cultural fabric of the community. I love when I meet a friend, Chris Lipp, on schoolmakers as their kids and being involved in their kid's school. Wrong. In conclusion, the proposed zoning changes have a potential negative effect. Everybody in Warren County, reduce land values, hinder families from achieving the American dream in every state. Decision-making process lack of transparency, give your engagement, you're going to vote on this and you're going to waive the changes. So nobody else can go out the next two days and then it will go through, but I got my words said. Disregarding the concerns and aspirations and affect of citizens, it's critical to the county government reevaluate this proposed change, taking into account the long-term consequences on the property values, the rule of way of life and the overall well-being of its residents. A comprehensive and inclusive approach, open dialogue, true planning can lead to zoning policies that strike the right balance between individual property rights and the collective interest of the community. We move to the country from less restriction, less taxes, less interpers. Thank you.
Please, I'm going to take your name and address.
My name is Janine Foster, my, uh, recently acquired land is seventy-eight White Illinois Street. I am a South sider, trying to come back to my family's farm. My father's sheep halter has passed away in March, and so, um, he owns two farms. Um, one farm is in my name, and my mother is trying to split up the other hundred and sixty acres to try to be as fair as two kids to two kids as he possibly can. Good luck. Um, so, you know, uh, my dad loved Warren County, he loved his farms, and you know, my dad loved getting on his tractor and like moving her. And so I wanted to share some personal stories, um, what's been surprising to me and how. I think you know my dad, okay? I can have her last. I can have a little less. Okay, I've been in my dad's school apartment of farming, and so I wanted to share some things I learned since March. How to drive tractor and skill. Um, how to get on stuff instead of tractor and skipper. And then nuts took over, um, roll bars break. And that you really have to have deer fences up to protect your garden, like that's a real thing. Um. You're not a master fiddle, destroy. What? Um, we also discovered that heavy duty beggar, while it tells that this works, it does not kill ticks. So, you could try a lot. Uh, cows like ravages. Um, you really have to wear jeans while working on the farm. Um, CRP line, like, oh my gosh, there's so much to learn and listen, we're trying. Um, my husband, I graduated from Norwalk High School, which is far from that husband. He's, he's not St. Louis, he's Lakewood guy, uh, but he's never driven a tractor. Thank God for Kevin Mills more and Claire and Rousey Brown, because they still accept our calls. I mean, we don't know how to do this stuff, and so he's learned, he's taken the cows to the vet, so he's scared about the cows, and so he's learned a lot there. And I share all these stories, so you know my commitment to my family's farm. Um, our desire is to come back and build. While we have the seventy acre piece, seven hundred and sixty, uh, piece of land, we are splitting it. And a hundred and forty will go to my brother, twenty will go to me. My desire is to build a residence on the twenty acres, it's on a dead end, it's on a dead end road. Based on interpretation of the proposed zoning changes and what we were told that we would not be able to build a residence in this location. I have two children, eighteen and twenty-one-year-old, and I am, I hope they stay here, I hope them to be able to have the land built, but I certainly, my desire is to move from the South side and come back. Based on this, I cannot build there, and so that's why I would ask for reconsideration on how that could happen. Thank you.
I have a question.
Sure. To me?
Uh. Could you explain just what the provision is that you feel doesn't allow you to, you know, I mean, I'm hearing a little bit of your understanding, why do you feel that something that's being proposed here doesn't allow you to do it?
Sure, and we actually got feedback from our surveyor. Um, so we got caught up in the fifth day, we were getting all like up and we kind of been reading. So, it's my understanding, and so I might not have all the technical terms, so they're busy, but a hundred and fifty-foot road frontage, what I learned from Lindsay, we've all been around, but there is, um, was there an exception or requirement to have a forty-foot unobstructed easement? It's something keys with that piece there, because we're at a dead end on Ninety Fifth Street here, and so it used to be a town road that went along the eighty acres, but there was a bridge, a bridge that washed out at some point in time, the county vacated the road. You have, um, one homeowner on one side, and then you have the family farm on the other side. And so it's with this easement, this is about the end of the dead end road, there's a tiny little way to get into the twenty acres. So what we were told by the surveyors, we would have to purchase land from a different farm to try to get additional unobstructed view of the land, and we could build a residence there. I'm very good. Yes.
Um, were you going to call?
I was.
Did you call yesterday?
I did, Lindsay and
Lance called.
Yes. Yes.
Um, did they explain this to you?
They did.
Is your perception confirmed?
Uh, to the best of my knowledge, I mean, I'm not going to, I mean, I did read through that, I'm going to ask you guys for reading out and understanding now that it's fair, I mean, it's difficult for a layperson who doesn't deal with that to try to understand. I mean, if what somebody is telling me is that, yes, Jenny, you can build a residence here, I mean, I don't have to put in you scared me, but I heard paid growth, like, I certainly don't want to do that in this area. Uh, if I am told that I'm misunderstanding the zoning, uh, changes, recommended changes, and I could build there, then, then I'm great. But that is not what I was told by someone who I feel like it's his business to understand this.
What did our folks say to you when they followed up with your situation?
She cleared up my misunderstanding of the hundred and fifty-foot, uh, road frontage, and then talked about the forty-foot easement. And so when I talked to my surveyor last night, it says forty-foot unobstructed view. And Lindsay, Lindsay's up here, am I putting any words in your mouth? No, no, okay, okay. So there's something with, I, I do not understand. So if there's some piece related to that that is preventing me from building, or you say, no, I'm wrong, then I'll go and be happy. Thank you.
Matt Thomas, uh, resident, six two thirty Fifth Avenue. I work for Civil Design Management, Land叔Fair in Warren County. Um, at a meeting for zoning commission, uh, it was absolute finite that it was brought up that, um, if you have a ingress egress or road easement coming up to a forty acre, the dead ends, it was finite, you cannot put a resident dwelling on that property because it did not have, um, frontage of a hundred fifty foot. And that was what they were stating on the rule, um. I had an individual that had also had a conversation with, uh, zoning yesterday. He's kind of in the same situation, it's a, uh, handle trail, and he does not have um, a frontage, it's the same thing as a dead end road coming into a forty acre. Um, his grandfather, who is Donovan Ricewick, um, had, uh, given him criteria that he had to meet for him to be able to develop ten acres on, on the original sixty. Um. He had a pulse for doing the property, the father and grandmother said, no, I don't want to split up the farm. Um, so he's asked me to make a modification to it, I think he's presented it to Lindsay, um, and zoning. Um, but basically, again, it's a ingress egress easement coming off of a dead end road to get to the ten acres, because his father or his grandfather just want to have um, the, um, the property cut off and, um, have the ten acres tied right into the road, because the septic system is right there next to this road easement that exists. Um, there are a lot of, um, criteria that are coming up that I guess it tends to eliminating the ingress egress easements, that coverage is not even brought into the zoning subdivision ordinance. Um, the question is current plot of surveys that have been graded with ingress egress easements for forty-foot con finish, are they going to be grandfathered in as they are currently recorded? Um, I do have some properties that I've surveyed that are, that didn't have any ingress egress easement, and the minimum frontage was required. Not providing that ingress egress easement made land to the back plant plots. Um. So there's, there is criteria that I can see the zoning commission or the, or the supervisors, it's going to have to look at an ingress egress easement, because the terrain, the topographic existence of a pond, a lake, you can't, you have a limit to access, and these people are trying to develop properties. Um, perking to the rules, um. Chad Daniels was the other Land叔Fair that was here, uh, he and I have worked with zoning in the past. Um, we've kind of reined in our developers on some of these, you know, that tell them, these are the rules, and then we've worked with you to make these passable with zoning. Um. It seemed that we were following the rules for the board reporting, and it was interpretations that were created by zoning meeting with other people that were buying the additional twenty acres or more to the, to the back end of the forty acres. We would make sure that there was access either by easement or by open land to the back forty. Um. And then when the property was sold, and there was only one residence on one of the plot of surveys that was done, for whatever reason, I, I know it was in zoning ordinance saying that it was by dwelling numbers, and they changed it to make sure that it was by built, the land divisions, number of parcels, which is the way they should have been, because Iowa code never said anything about dwelling units, they always said by parcel. So you were able to do three parcel splits and a forty under the Iowa code. Warren County had it under dwelling. So people were looking at the dwelling units and saying, oh, we have a residence but only one. And now I sold my back twenty, and then another developer comes in and says, I want to develop this, you only have one dwelling unit. So then they were offering it as, oh, you can develop that then. And that was where you were getting your seven parcels and forty. So, uh, that was a concern that we had, it was as, as Land叔Fairs interpreting the, the rules, we were the ones that were more strict on what was going on, and then there was conversations from the zoning department that was like, well, back in our word is, there's not four dwellings, there's only two. You can do two more splits, or you can do three more splits into like one block. Instead of looking at the actual development that was already established by parcels. Um, so I, I'm guessing the, the big thing is ingress egress easements, they're not addressed in the current zoning that's being proposed to you. I think that's an issue that needs to be continued. Um, the neighboring or the neighboring counties that zoning's looked at and, uh, um, NSA, um, hmm. I can't say that they're not equivalent, I think Dallas County is, but Polk County, they don't have the many miles that Warren County still has, unincorporated Warren County. Um, you guys have brought up conversations about, um, needing more, uh, growth in the county. I think that going with ten acre parcels, that's going to hinder you on developments. It's going to force everybody to develop subdivisions as they are next to the cities. And they get added to the cities and the county's not going to get, get anything out of that, but, but getting the, uh, property tax as part of their, um, percentage. Um. You won't be seeing any of your permanent fees and stuff coming, you do the plot of this stuff. That, that's my input on this. Um, so I'm just, I'm hoping that you kind of reconsider on ingress egress easement, to look at that being a tool, not a hindrance on, on your parcel splits. Yeah, that's a, that's a personal side, I'm just concerned about your savings or thinking that you're the unincorporated supervisor, the other two are representing more other counties, but also in the whole end. I'm, I'm, I'm concerned about your input.
Well, I think it was, um, our, our focus was to move these subdivisions closer to the cities so that they could be with the next year. Um. I think more people who want to live in these rural heights subdivisions, um, are people who are used to the cities and used to those amenities, and, um, living just outside of the city is just funny for them. Uh, those who want a rural lifestyle, um, well, that will be the one you'll be known of. Um, they would, um, they will breed in, which is the funniest thing. So. Um, we do have rural subdivisions, and they will be lighter and encourage. Um. And to that one, Jenny's, um, comment, you know, that uh, it will limit people from purchasing them from being able. Um, not if you purchase, uh, land outright instead of in the apartment. So, um, there's always a way we can work with. I, I'm, I'm not quite all in raising ingress and egress.
Ingress egress is a shared driveway approach, um, where if you're limited, um, um, because you have Warren County Engineering also having a review, a plot of survey, or as, um, as you're looking at the R R one or two and a, even A one, um, they have to look at site distance, and their requirements on that are minimum of a five or four site distance. Um, I, again, was assistant to the engineer in Warren County, so was Chad Daniels, so we both have knowledge of the engineering requirements. Um, and that's why we're better, um, experienced person with what, what we do with the survey. Um, and, and like I said, we bring in some of our developers, we had developers that, and they just wanted to throw parcel here, but not considering geography, access to the road. Um, so we would have to say to them, well, you can do a two acre parcel, but you will got to have an ingress egress easement, otherwise you're going to land lock the back forty or the back twenty acre acres, and, um, I've got a few of them that have got, I think it's been ingress egress for, uh, access to get to the back. Going across somebody else's property, it's the benefit of the property that's behind or allowing another lot to come across your property to access to the opponent property.
How is, uh, what you're talking about here, how will it seem different from the neighboring counties?
Um, in referring, in referring to the ingress egress easements, we, as, we had the forty foot, that's the way all the other counties are too, they still have a minimum forty foot ingress egress easement allowed for Madison County, Marion County, Dallas County. Um. Polk County, they do a rural survey where they only allow a, a family member to split off part of a forty acre, if the family owns a hundred and sixty acres, they can put a, a family dwelling unit on a forty in each one of those forties. So if you have a hundred and sixty acre, you got four that you can do. Um, it allows them to put in a minimum of two acre parcel or a three acre parcel. And then, um, the rest of it is like, um, untouchable until it's developed. If, if it ever got sold to be developed, then they go through subdivision ordinance.
So, um, you're tied back again to this ingress egress situation now as well, what's being imposed here? Um, either allowing or not allowing what you're talking about, well, making us different from these other counties, how we're doing.
There, I work with big farmers that are in Warren County. Um, they'll buy a farm on an option. They'll look at the land and they'll look at CSR values of that property, and they'll determine, I'm not going to farm that land, I'm going to sell it. It could be pasture, it could be wooded, they want to be able to sell that property. Um. They provide, they may have to provide an ingress easement, ingress egress easement to get to that piece that they want to get rid of, that they're not going to farm. And let somebody else use it for hunting or building a house, and it could be anything from five, uh, two acre to twenty acres, depending on how big the land they had. But they know that they only can have this one driveway in there because they have been on site distance. And the county's not going to allow another one, so the, the access has to come from maybe trading between the two properties, split of the unusable to the agricultural. The farm equipment may have to get across the piece that they don't want to use for farming, but it's the only access they have to approach.
Are you saying, are we different in other nights?
Yeah, and, and eliminating like the ingress egress easement, you are. If, if that's the route, and that's sort of something, I mean, that's good on top.
Of course, the perception here, what's changed your problem differently?
Right, because even Polk County allows an ingress e, ingress egress easement on a rural survey for families that they, they want to be able to still farm a little forty, but they may have on a hillside of an area that they, they can put a house. And so they'll put an ingress egress easement in there to, to not cut off the farming.
Do you feel comfortable responding to what else you've heard this morning? I don't appreciate you doing that.
Yeah, you, uh.
So you heard the other two people that were just up there prior to you?
Yeah.
Are you addressing the same issue that you're concerned about?
Uh, with with Bob Dar, I know he's a developer and I seen um his developments. And I even worked with him on a few of them and and he had come to me with one that was gonna kick him over the five parcels in a in a forty. And I knew I couldn't go forward with that as Lindsay was gonna just throw it under the, you know. I you're not allowed to do that. Somehow I got asked with Greg Oldman and other insubvered, I understand. I don't know what the rules were and how I got down to, you know, commission and PNC era. Uh supervisors can make that recommendation. I I just knew I didn't wanna get involved in that because I'm in the county. And and that one was gonna be a hard one to to justify splitting because it didn't meet the subdivision ordinance. And and I think Chad looks at that as well because he wasn't part of that. It was another, like I said, another surveyor out of it. Kind of week. Um, I I'm a hundred percent agreeing with Foster. Um, she should be able to develop something that's on a twenty acre that may have a roof come right up to her property. To say that you have no access and you can't put a a residence on on that twenty just seems absurd. And it was funny night with the with our NSA. They said you cannot do it.
Because the ordinance doesn't speak, you could guess the reason.
It doesn't address the ingress.
Or it's the fact that it's not being addressed that's the concern.
Right, and then they're kicking in this frontage being, you have to have road frontage of a hundred and fifty foot, two hundred and fifty foot, depending on zoning. Um, that you you just can't get unless you're gonna, you're gonna provide, I guess, the county a public road. Coming into your twenty for you to have a twenty foot wide road from your house. Nobody's gonna do that. They're gonna put in a twelve foot wide driveway. And the and the and the uh county engineers are not gonna worry about the design standards for a twelve foot wide drive.
For some ways, the lack of comment, yeah, that's the concern there. My interpretation.
That that's that.
The language and the lack of addressing your issue, that's the ingress egress.
We've worked at where I had one that was um on the end of the old highway of sixty five, sixty nine. That was paved and it came right up into a dead end into a twenty acre. And um the county worked with me on that one. They're like, yeah, we will, we will allow you to have forty. Yeah, forty or eighty foot right, but forty foot on one side, forty foot on the other. It that was just, it was for the section mine was right down that section of the road. This line was on that east half. They worked with me on that one, but hearing from the meeting on zoning, it was fine. I know. That was what the consultants had said directly to to the um to Chad Daniels asking that on the survey side. And and zoning didn't say anything to dispute that.
Is the ingress and egress issue specific to that end roads? Or is because Jenny's on Jenny's issue is it's down on the end of the road. Correct, Jenny?
Correct.
Yeah, it seems like, you know, this issue is specific to those situations where a road ends.
It is to those and it's to to property that exists if you. I I got one that had a lake frontage. The lake was, I don't know how they did it, but they had a lake up using the the road as their dam. It's down south of Milo and um I when I was at county's uh county assistant to the engineer. County supervisor, I drove by that and like, I don't understand how that could even be. Um, because the water flows usually the whole part of the road. Um, anyhow, now twenty, you know, ten years later, that lake is the like. Blocking all the frontage that they're wanting to do with the two hundred and fifty or a hundred and fifty frontage. Um, for you to be able to develop anything, you gotta have an easement that everybody's sharing. If you're doing by the rules of the forty forty, if you're doing a subdivision. Yeah, you're gonna build a road and you're gonna bring it all the way back there. But this was like pre predevelopment. These people are doing quick plot of survey, putting a house on the front. Eventually, if there's another eighty acres to the back, that's gonna be a potential development. Could be a, it could be a campground, could be a, could be a cabin, it's gonna be residential. I just don't wanna have that property land without having an easement that later could be a road. And if there's any more questions. So thank you. Yeah, thank you.
We do have someone online.
Uh, hold on, so is there any, okay, so you have somebody online that has a question?
Yes.
Can we hear you?
Um.
Hi Darren, uh, I board Mac rank one, three, zero, six, nine, Garst Trail. Uh, Matt was referring to me on the Kendall Trail Project. Uh, Darren, I appreciate you talking to me about it yesterday. Um, I appreciate all the work that the zoning commission and the zoning um department are doing on this. Um, just wanted to share my concerns um with the ordinance. You know, I I I don't wanna beat a dead horse here by any means and kind of reiterate what's already been said. But um I think there are some some holes that probably need to be worked through on this. Um, I really have concerns with the proposed second and third readings being tomorrow and Thursday. On trying to get the ordinances in place. I understand that we wanna get it done sooner than later as the memorandum is up. At the end of the week, but um there are adverse reactions to everything that. Is in this proposed document and like Jenny and myself. Um, not only have we been held back for the last ninety days on being able to do a split to put one parcel up. Um, there's been significant increases in interest rates and construction costs. On us being able to do our our projects and um. I really struggle with the idea that subdivisions are gonna be okay if they meet these criteria. But to put one house on a family farm that's more than forty acres. Is all of a sudden that now not okay? That that doesn't make any sense to me. I I grew up on this farm. My grandparents live on this farm. My parents live on this farm. We wanna have four generations on this farm by this time next year. And as it sits right now, if you guys approve this, we are not going to be able to do that. And I don't think that that's, that is the county's responsibility to to deter people from being able to do that. So just wanted to share my opinion. I appreciate your guys' hard work on this and I would urge you to not do a second and third reading this week.
Thank you, Matt. Can you give us?
Thanks.
Hey, Matt, we hear you and I appreciate your comments. We'll we'll definitely be discussing this. Anybody else from the, I would like to talk about the, is that?
Yes, Marilyn Haldeman, nineteen oh five, seven Drake Street, Carlisle, Iowa. Uh, my video isn't working, so, but I concur with Mark. I think that that is a rushed uh public hearing. I feel that a good share of the public does not know that this is going on. I feel like they need to be able to voice their opinions and have some type of publicity about it. I concur with Mark. Thank you.
Hey Marilyn, thank you very much. Anybody else? I'm not gonna make the motion go out of hearing. We have a motion to second. We'll call this.
McIntyre?
Um, no.
Peter?
Hi, and we're back in our regular meeting. We 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 heard a few things um today. Public transparency is one that I I'd like to address is with uh with my fellow colleagues on the board supervisors. We get this, you know, almost across the board with everything that we do here at the county that we're, you know. We would not, we're we're intentionally not trying to inform our public. I wanted to say that I I just respectfully, one hundred percent disagree. That the county has any motivation whatsoever not to communicate with the public. If we're giving you that indication, that is on us. And in the past um six months, we tried everything that we can think of to. To communicate what what our thoughts are, we want our public to be involved in this. Either one can say that when surveyors come and landlords come and developers come and discussing matters. That makes us better. But this input we're getting today is gonna make our board stronger and better and more consistent for the future. That is the approach of this board. And um, you know, we have uh emailed. If you want to be involved in West Carolina County, you can give us your email address. And everything we can get's emailed out to you, the minutes, the comments. These good, these uh meetings are um public. They're on video. They're accessible on our website. Um, we have uh. Done whatever we can do to get our public involved. We will, we will, we won't. Our representatives, our public, without the public, we were nothing, you know, without our input, we don't have them. And that that is never wavered in the, I don't think probably ever in the history of Warren County, because, you know. But maybe that's embellishing a little bit, but in the two and a half years I've been here and the time Chris was down here. I think that we strive to be transparent. It's not as easy as it seems. I mean, there are um thirty or forty pretty significant things going on in our county right now. And to communicate all of those things in every level of details is not easy task. But the media comes in here to our meetings, Amy Duncan is in our meetings, um every public meeting, she writes about that. I listen in the paper. Um, uh, we have. In the last two and a half years, we incorporated uh more work sessions, which are public meetings. We have a public, we have work sessions uh in between our regular meetings. That we hadn't done up until two and a half years. I mean, we had occasional work sessions, but we have insistent work sessions. Um, that our public comes to and may and is, you know. It opens up the annual communication between the public and board supervisors and it also allows the board supervisors to communicate. So we are scratching our heads trying to figure out how to give this public transparency. Like the board of supervisors are ramrodding things through here that consistently. We're trying to change things. We're trying to get things done. We're trying to put in systems. And people and talent and resources to increase the level of service to block out. It's it's what we do every day. We care about our people. And so when people say you're not transparent or you're ramrodding these through, it could be further from the truth. It absolutely could be further from the truth. And if anybody has any ideas, um, you know, we've had a, they've had a new Facebook page. Perhaps that will help our communication. We've had advice, but that's not a good idea for counting to do. You know, we've we've kind of struck out there, but not having a Facebook page, I have no idea how it can be more. I I think welcome any ideas we have. So that's the public transparency issue. Um, I think we, you know, leave it to the board of supervisors here. I'm comfortable with your. And I think we've done a very good job of putting this together. I think we have uh some. I can just tell um Jenny that uh it's not our intention to. Not a lot of you realize your, it really is, and your input is valuable today. We're gonna go back and and um I unless the board wants to do something different, but I would uh. I'd like the opportunity to look at the the easement, the ingress, egress, the egress easement issue. Uh, we do, with these, these ordinances are put in place because of safety reasons. Because of pine growth reasons, because of uh safety reasons. We have issues on Warren County, we just can't get our emergency vehicles down some of these entrances and driveways. They're unsafe. We can't, you know, we can't have county where we can't get our emergency vehicles where they need to go. So believe me when I say, this is pure motive of trying to increase the level of service, increase the safety. Increase the infrastructure and make sure that we're growing to the planned organized fashion. Because that's, that hasn't been the case. That has not been the case here in Warren County. But um it's not the intention of the Warren County Board of Supervisors to prevent people from living in our county. From, you know, enjoying our, to buy our beautiful uh landscape. And so. That's kind of where we're at. So I'll put the board on if we wanna, you know, put this on the table for a second reading somewhere after two weeks. Where we can go back.
Scheduled for tomorrow.
Yeah, I'll see you later. So anyway, those are my comments on what we're gonna have. I appreciate you coming to the board.
I would concur with you and I would say we've tried very hard to be very open and transparent about things. And yeah, open means with the uh zoning commission, at least two, I would think, right off topic. Yeah, plus there've been numerous public events that have been scheduled throughout this past year. Notices throughout local media and on social media and other types of things, making people aware. Uh, that we're wanting them to put from from Pope. So it's not our intention at all. Somehow do this in the dark of the morning or whatever you wanna call this, that we're being alleged to to do. So I I would concur with the supervisor on that, that uh if anything, we try to be over engaging. Um, as I'm sorry that some people are not aware of that or things like that. That's, that disheartens me when I hear that. You know, but today's good example of how the system and the process works. Because there is an opportunity, um, voice that's concerned. I believe I wrote down several notes here today as a result of the expressions that were made. Uh, and I'm gonna be asking some additional questions to figure these things out. I think the uh development surveyor uh did a very good job of trying, starting to bring up the issue. Of lack of not addressing the issue causes as much as what is. So I think it adds a concern that we have to address in the process and such. As we wrap this, this is just part of a longer term discussion. Finalizing of the sort of, we heard our representative in the same procedural standpoint. All this is gonna be addressed here in the next ten months because we have additional uh updates that are gonna be kind of coming. Plans and all of the stuff you're talking about today is coming back again. We're just trying to do step by step by step to get in order fashion. Uh, to a place where we are uh with the modern age and gain more pressure about how we deal with things. So uh I think it's very good to have the comments that have come up today and I got a few of them. Thoughts of it, appreciate that very much, but it's it's a process. And uh we all are uh trying to do our best to make sure that everybody uh is heard. And understood what we wanna do. Last one I wanna do is restrict people's.
I'd like to talk about um the safety in the neighborhoods. Uh, I was witness firsthand the development of neighborhoods that have resulted in. Uh, an inability for a ambulance or a fire truck to go down because there were incumbents. Um, in the formation of neighborhoods, so no one within that neighborhood wants to uh pay for upgrading their road. So their road is almost impassable in the sense of. Um, that should not be acceptable in our county. And from a government standpoint, that is where we do make sure that our stated women are protected. If they have a fire or if they need assistance, we can do it home. That is in the same principle. And it it frustrates your freedom to do what you want to do with your land. Um unfortunately, we care about your safety a little bit more than you do. And I hate to say that because I'm a freedom-loving, um good, totally American. And I believe that I want to do what I want with my land, but I also know that I want the incumbents to come to my house should someone in my family or I need one. And I want a fire truck to pull up in case there's a fire there too. Um there's the neighborhoods that um were overdeveloped and splits. Um I'm thinking of one particularly that holds about seventy homes on gravel. And whenever there's a rain, we will have those citizens fill up this um boardroom and complain about their roads. And um they want aid. Well, in the beginning, when that development was forming, if we as a government don't step in and say, we require a creative vote if you're gonna have more than four homes, then by golly, we won't have that filled up boardroom with those citizens demanding that their roads are repaid. By the rest of the county, when that developer, that developer got all the profits from it. Do you think that's fair to us as taxpayers? I don't. I think the developer is gonna be pumping off of that, should be the one to do that, really. So when you talk about safety, when you talk about freedom, I don't know which one you think is more paramount. I couldn't care about my freedom, but I do want our citizens to be safe as well.
So um yes, I would uh request a motion on this that I am, from my department this time.
I think it's my understanding, we want to address the ingress, ingress proportion that we have to scrap all of our hearings and start the work, have this, have this work, Lindsay, and so.
With the interests that you've expressed, we would recommend that you are involved with the exception that ingress and egress are allowed in this ordinance.
Unfortunately.
The ordinance, oh, certainly there's much to talk about then.
We would, we would include that one, as known as already in the section ordinance says.
Okay, so you're you recommend that we go ahead and put these ordinances, uh hold on. Um either approve or disapprove them, but with the exception that we need to, that we need to define ingress and egress and our policy that we're gonna date.
We can define them in this round if if you do a conditional recommending or a conditional approval with those. Um people will be allowed to apply for variance for those easements in terms of the ordinance. So that would be our recommendation moving forward to happy ordinances that we want to cover on and to allow everybody to come and be heard and include those in this route of provisions.
I would also like to hear from our county um assistant engineer with the input on the ingress and egress on a safety standpoint.
I I just wanna say that you do have a second and third readings of thirteen grounds. And so if you don't want to adopt something today, but you can always add that. If you do want to extend our moratorium and have a meeting in a couple of weeks, I heard Anna mentioned that, that can be done. So those are considerations that I'd like to address on you.
The way the ordinance used to read was you had to have a hundred and fifty foot of frontage or a four inch of easement. I never liked that. I think the hundred and fifty foot of frontage is good and that should be required. Some cases you do need an easement because this lane may have a hundred and fifty foot of frontage. But there's no place on there where where site essence works for entrance, but then you get that an easement, a labor parcel. But to have completely landlocked parcels in the back, I don't think it's a good idea. You might have a four mile road and you have to get back into then those that turn into private trails and private lanes, and then you have the issue you have with the piece altogether. Uh allowing an easement, if you have frontage, is fine. And what Matt was speaking to with you don't have a landlocked property in the back, you still have, leave a hundred and fifty foot frontage parcel and have a flagship property to go back in there. And now take out all the frontage on that road before. But I think you can allow easements in certain situations, but the road frontage still should be a requirement. You can draw all different squares on on the map wherever you want. And yes, some places it's not gonna work, but that's typical. A lot of places we can't, we could be, some you cancel it out five times and it makes sense. There's no ponds there. To me, that still seems like a property owner's responsibility. They built a pond and they hindered their ability to have road frontage, so that's not something I think you should allow three or four slips in the back. So. And.
Well, I appreciate it.
Maybe more if I was coming in that time, six more, that would be wonderful. But I might not, I'd just like a couple of weeks to really dive into a couple of issues, but I mean, I'm in total agreement about what I mean. I'm in an eighty percent agreement of what's our ordinance is writing down, but I just want to doubt the heads of processes on this, because these are, these are big decisions, these are permanent decisions. You know, it'll last for a long time until somebody else has the courage to change it. And so.
No, that's for that reason. That's why I think let's not over rush us and most of the right. And we'll make sure that we get some of these questions addressed that were brought up today. And I would concur with you that we may be better. Uh so I think let's just take the time and do it right.
Jenny, we'll use your your situation, you know, we'll look at, we're gonna hold your property up on the map, we're gonna look through uh the running roads, the easements. And uh if it's okay, we can use use that as an example on, you know, what what are the, what are the implications to some of these ordinances with our law enforcement? So we'll we'll do a thorough examination of that. If you wanna get involved in that, well, uh, rights and input will happen here. We appreciate you being here today.
Thank you so much.
Okay, appreciate all of you. So let's set up public hearing, uh let's set up public hearing days. Um Kayla, help us out. When is the board of supervisors begin and when can we have that, that must be something that's hard to stay. You want, you have something to add? So if you're not going to take action today, are you going to stand and watch for it?
Yes.
Okay. How long are you gonna be extended?
Quite could extend it for uh, you know, seven days before two days is what would be my high preference.
Well, if you're gonna advertise for your public meeting.
Um I I think too that outside of the cost of a machine and and the timeframe, um I think what Sarah was proposing was that we do a conditional um approval that um will have a wording and so forth brought to us, but on condition you can agree to the egress, ingress situation. Um but that we go ahead and approve everything with a conditional approval and that maybe sounds satisfactory to to what.
That procedure, looking at that probably the most efficient and the most expensive way to do it.
Yes.
Sure, so and they just don't have that more formal than they don't have.
Yeah, can I emphasize one thing that I don't think has been emphasized enough? You're you're using ordinances from comprehensive plan from the eighties. And you doubt, the board adopted a comprehensive plan in two thousand and two, but they did not adopt ordinances to go to comprehensive plan. All you're doing today is getting, you're going from those ordinances from the eighties to
Two thousand.
To two thousand and two. Okay, what you're adopting, I don't think anybody ever intends to be permanent, twenty twenty-three ordinances. Okay, this is, or twenty twenty-four, when you adopt your comprehensive plan. This is a temporary fix to get you from the eighties to two thousand and two. You're then, and when Sarah talks about ten months, you're then going to take these ordinances from two thousand and two that are adopted twenty-two years or twenty-one years too late. And you're going to address all of these things at a later point in time. That will give you a chance to have more public meetings, more public input. I've sat down with the zoning board last night, Dawn and I had talked to them on the current zoning office about this. There are numerous opportunities for them to be town halls, listening session, whatever you wanna call them, and get input from people. So that it, you get it perfect. Is this perfect? This is, this is not perfect. Okay, I will acknowledge that clearly upfront right now. But it gets you moved forward to the point where you can open up the land so that they can start being developed. Ten months from now, then you're gonna give us a product where you want it. And where the county wants it.
Question is, what about the Jennings of the world? You know, what what can we do to make the other one on the local authorities more important? Because as it stands right now, it's not favorable according to our ordinances, right? And I don't wanna have wait ten months to be able to solve it.
I'm not gonna go specific because I don't know how all those things are gonna be interconnected with one another. So I don't wanna say that there's a way to fix it because I don't honestly know as I stand here because I don't know. I tried to follow the exact situation and I tried to look at all the maps as she spoke. So I I'm not gonna try to say there's a solution in there because I don't know. But you have to look at the greater ability here. And it's, I understand it's her situation and it's her family's situation, but you have to look at the big picture at some time. And that's where you're at, is you're looking countywide, and what's this county gonna look like for the next ten months? Right? Is that gonna create hardship for some people? I'm sure it will. And I I sympathize and empathize with those people, but it's the big picture. And and that goes to what you were talking about with the egresses and and the trails and the roads. Because I I I completely agree with what you said. And and I would add to it to this, is that if you create a trail and that somebody comes in, that's great, and you've made a decision for yourself and your family on whether you care that an ambulance or a fire truck can get in there, okay? You go sell it twenty years to Darren, okay? Darren has no idea the decisions that you've made until it affects Darren and now an ambulance or a fire truck hit Darren's house. That's the same, that's the next step on the safeguarding. That you are not a hundred percent of the justice that needs to be made. So you're you're tending to a certain point today with an idea and an understanding that you're gonna get to a better future ten months from now. And you're gonna listen to people between then and now, and that's not to say that people haven't been listening to you yet. Okay, because I think you have, you have plenty of opportunity in the public sector for these things. There will be more of them. That's all I would say.
I may, we recognize that there will be non-performing laws and that there will be individualized issues as there are currently. Uh the pieces revisions were developed for the approximately fifty-five thousand people in Moore County. And there's tools within the ordinances to address the individualized needs and experiences. So there are options for people to work through, and if they're in a more safe and concise manner with a little bit of regulation that the public already developed uh more safely. So I don't, I don't need to be that hard to see uh things that are missed today. And the uh the option to use those tools for me like um Jenny and Mr. Thomas who spoke earlier. Um there there are opportunities for those types of development. If you'd like to pursue them.
So if we follow your suggestion as far as moving forward today um from a resolution perspective, what we get to address this ingress, egress uh problem in that potentially? What should be the type of language that we should use today for that resolution? Do you adopt this, but get involved on the uh possibility of the change or whatever? Do we need to make a statement in that resolution that this is not a complete uh perfect situation and you realize there are professional issues that need to be addressed?
I think even if you, I'm concerned about the time issue, the procedural issues that you brought up. The time when you adopt, and obviously this is not a complete, it's a working process. Well, let's assume for the sake of argument that you would soon, you approved them today, you approved them at your second, and you approved them at your third. Then at that point, they're adopted, right? Then you can go back and correct them on the short term. If you see that there is something that is completely uncredible, okay, it it does not work to what you want it to be. Uh amended early. So if it doesn't allow for the development that you want it to be, then after you adopt this, your short term amendment, you know, just in the normal, regular course of business.
Okay, so so I'm hearing correctly. You can just really vote up and down today with the resolution adopting these regulations that ordinance that present.
That would be my suggestion.
If that's my problem.
Yes. I think when, once you start getting to, we're gonna pull this, we're gonna pull that. That's, that's how you go from nineteen eighty to two thousand and two without adopting it then. Because in any one of the decisions then, you've gotta make a decision.
So from a procedure standpoint, when you do the first review today, basically, you know, second and third potentially.
Yes.
Those are already scheduled. Tomorrow at one P M is the second reading and uh the third at nine thirty A M is the third reading.
Based on, based, based on what your, you know, what your corrections, the I kinda, I changed my mind. I think we should now vote today. Yes. And I would question, what is the benefit of a second interbreeding? Like, we're gonna approve this, but you understand that it'd be modified.
Well, I think more public to be in town and address issues that we have with it.
Uh. And these are public meetings, so we're gonna get all the files set up. I would not.
One, one.
The reading is on Thursday.
Nine thirty.
Nine. So. Well, I don't think. No, I'll make a motion uh to adopt more county zoning ordinances, revisions uh to bring them up to date to our two thousand and two standards. Uh, to bring them up to date to our two thousand and two standards. Oh, the uh, district packet and the subdivision packet. That is uh, that are part of the documents in your packet. I'm making a motion to adopt these ordinances as written in the documents. And uh, with the second and third readings, say that was the way the motion. And second, vote call please.
McIntyre.
I'm Snow.
I.
Peter.
I.
So those orders have been approved. It stays to them, please intend our public meetings and please just nothing to add in real. As we navigate through. The next item on our agenda. This public hearing to consider this thorough county-owned property to Timothy and that I have. Wager and Tyrell and maybe the dirt. Said property is in Churchill, North County, Iowa.
What?
Vote call please.
McIntyre.
I'm Snow.
I.
Peter.
I.
So we're not public meeting, hang on.
I've been contacted a while ago, quite a while ago, by Tyrell and Tyler Ray. And then also I was contacted by uh, Tim Wood, both of them own the property in Churchill. Um, there is a vacant street, a market street that is um, in the two properties. They reached out to our half of that. They have had surveys done. Um, I have checked with uh, various departments within the county. Nobody's objected in the public notice of this one, the few newspapers, I don't think anybody um, objected to this. No one speaking about it at all. I have a proposal issue for you and I'd be happy to leave that. This would be to the bond. Take other property and sublet to these two parties. That's essential to the county would quickly and simply inspire quickly to need part for their individual pieces. And I I mean, I'm just um, you you received your half of the obvious. I have a public notice and you have the uh, a letter that I have written a while ago.
I I don't have any questions. You're not having a fairer election. Any questions for Dawn, Ms. Mann?
Let it be the resolution. Be the result of the law and the supervisor's seen the right privilege to the sale of a county property. Then you describe as follows, the east path of the vacant market street line, market south. And adjacent to lots one five or block one, continually north to the broad line of vacant south north street. And the south panel of vacant north street line between block four, Churchill O T P. And out of lot four, Churchill lot lots in section eight, township seventy-six, twenty-five. Was the the one living in one county by law to Timothy and I know you did. Twenty-nine forty-one in its street, then no law guide wealth. And the west path of the vacant market street in the north and south and adjacent to lots one and eight. Of block two, continually north to the north line of vacant north street. And part of the vacant north street line between block one, Churchill O T P and out of lot five. Churchill lot lots in section eight, township seventy-six, twenty-five, was the one living. In one county by law and then we go to Tyrell and maybe uh, twenty twenty-one in its street, no law guide. So those they will be made by forty-one, so so part of the income of dollars to each party. Um, plus one hell of a huge house to each county. By part of the income, we will be there with.
I make a motion go out of public. Vote call.
McIntyre, um, Snow.
I.
Peter.
I.
Good, now that I'm ready to meet with you, thank you, Dawn. I like the motion to uh, approve. Resolution you spread.
McIntyre.
I'm Snow.
I.
Peter.
I.
And motion approved. Thank you very much, Dawn. Next item on our agenda is to consider approval of usage of ARPA funds to purchase a vehicle from one county's community partner for possible action.
Uh, so during budget time, we had allocated forty-five thousand dollars um, in our budget. For the vehicle for zoning, um. At that time, we're looking to balance the budget. So um, this is just the ARPA application coming um, to you guys. Now if you would rather. Um, have it be part of amendment and pay the whole amount, we can do that as well. So um, it's giving lets you feel okay to before you approve the coverage, it's on budget. And then deciding where exactly you wanna have it on. So it's around the timing and decided ARPA. Um, but I never officially gone through the approval process.
We can source this uh, from the local services fund uh, through that purchase of the ARPA. So it's possible that.
I think yeah, maybe the motion you guys are for a vehicle purchase to be into common or all. Uh, so then I'll go to do an amendment for it at the end uh, once she's okay to go ahead and purchase.
I think I have a little bit of motion. Because the source funding for it, I'll do the service part.
The motion, second vote call please.
McIntyre.
I'm Snow.
I.
Peter.
I, motion approved. Thank you, Megan, very much. Uh, next item on our agenda is to consider approval of usage of ARPA funds for protected glass in the one county association office with possible action. I have to be associated office. Um, yes, the admission that has come up in a meeting a couple of times. It's a safety measure. Um. I don't know if the association office must go over this or we need more information at this time, but um. It was something that's just kind of been hanging out there, so uh. I think uh, the time there was some discussion about maybe the sheriff could help us with some kind of program. And uh, I don't know if you'd pursue that, like in the dead end road, so now you can go back and say, okay, we'll try. The first avenue or not, you need to know what the court wants to do, knowing that that is not an opportunity for us. I'm assuming that our uh, our that local services is not an option for this. What's the amount?
Ten thousand eight hundred twenty-five.
Any questions for the association office or any comments? Okay. Uh, our can motion.
Uh, motion to approve usage of our funds for protective glass in one county association office.
All set. Good, roll call.
McIntyre.
I'm Snow.
I.
Peter.
I, motion is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the admissions. Okay, uh, the next item on the agenda is to consider approval remaining ARPA funds to use for administration building updates, possible action. I would make a motion, uh, remove the remainder of our funds available of the use for administration building updates. We have a motion to sign a vote call please.
McIntyre, um, Snow.
I.
Peter.
I, motion is approved. So just for the public uh, information on that, uh, and I get, I still get requests for our applications. So at this point, I think we can consider, you know, the ARPA process closed relative to uh, send on ARPA dollars. It's kind of a exciting moment. I've had fortunate to have ARPA for a couple of years. Helped us through some very uh, tenuous times. And now we're on our own version of the fund and our uh, our other funds. But uh. That would be the end of that program from distribution standpoint. Uh, item number ten is to consider the approval for additional full-time ARPA to be thrown. Oh, that I missed that. Thank you, Mark. Uh, number five, consider approval to create a new fund for the administration building updates and designate one point two million dollars from the general fund. To this new fund with possible action.
I would move that we create a new fund for the administration building updates and designate one point two million dollars from the general fund to this new fund.
And that's also.
Yes, and there are the funds for that too, they have a fund. So do we need a second motion?
So the ARPA funds would stay in our fund, um, and we would pay for it backwards and then there's to be an additional one point two million dollars. But they'd be in same weight and then you have that one's in our fund. It's also.
Yeah, we made my motion.
Vote call.
McIntyre.
I'm Snow.
I.
Peter.
I, motion is approved. Item number ten is to consider the approval for additional full-time ARPA position with possible action. And I do have some comments on this, um. That are different from my comments in the work session because I thought this through and I just wanted to uh. Just inform the board and David of kind of where I'm at on this. I do have some concerns uh, regarding. Uh, did you know, you know, the timing because I was under. I felt as if a new hire would help us with the election. You know, that's kind of the field that I got. And as we kind of time out. Um, you know, the timing takes to post, have you ten days in there and get candidates in here. And by the time you get somebody hired, I don't think, I think. It can be safe to say that that's not really gonna be able to impact our election by August twenty-nine. I probably, you know, I don't think we support the question, Dawn. I think they didn't mention claims or something for this person to do after the election.
Congress under the condition that this is uh, claims, the pain on those on time, depending on the new election.
That's my question. So, okay, but this was actually to add to the uh. Office efficiency basically. That's necessary because there there is not enough uh, you know, hands on deck.
Okay, so that would be a side. That's her name concern I have is um. You know, it it ends up that David wants the election, you know, and all harm will follow. But what happens? If she's won, wins the election, she has another, just a fullback person who just placed there a couple of weeks before her assuming office. It kind of. You know, makes me think about that um. A couple of years ago, when we had a dispatch man to come in, he was from somebody upcoming in, no, we didn't election. And I didn't, I just think there there are things to consider. Um, that if, you know, if the scenario is that she's won the election. She has this new position and this new person that she had no input into who was or what their experience was and. I just see it being a potential problem. I know, I think it would be for me if I came in and put a lot of employee that's been here two weeks. I mean, they don't have the background, I don't know if the core of the personality is off a little bit. I just, I just want the board to hand Dean. And to think about that aspect. Um, because what's another twenty-nine days in the overall scheme of? Of uh, getting getting uh, more resources in the office and that that's just what I've been.
It's a good point. And that's one that I thought about. Uh, so, you know, I had a conversation with the team about how important it is. For them to agree who this person is coming in. Uh, I don't know what the futures are of creating this, but I do have limitedness or having on the utilities for how. If I knew for the past eighteen month points, they're time we pay our bill fleet. I've got new staff in there that are doing fantastic, they're not speed, but unfortunately they'd like to figure it out on the close to the point of training. You're not not that much training involved with it. So uh, we've got our elections that we're doing time on elections. Asking for our claims people and the legal people to come over and help them. And we've had to tell them, no, we've got to save on these areas. I got an email this morning from Century Lincoln, they're gonna shut shut our bill off if we don't pay it by August fifteenth because of bill fleet. I don't know these things and I don't have enough uh. Uh, in your, in that area right there was uh, the staff that's in there to take care of these and say they're popular. So I need that immediately. I do believe. That if I have that other person in there immediately, these things will stop. We put a stop to the late fees on the new bills, those are done. What's next? I'm finding them as I pick them up uh, day by day. It's been, it's been left unattended for a moment now. Months and months of of time in the the business tax credits for local businesses in one county, six months unattended completely. We're still fixing those problems. We're getting the spenders of their uh, tax uh, bridge that there's totally being recouped. As they find out when they're due their taxes, they may not respond. They they call our office and say, why, I filled that out six months ago. Why isn't it done? So. This person is definitely gonna be working within the claims area. They are uh, eventually they're gonna be taking care of. Participating in the maintenance of county buildings. There's gonna be several other areas. We're gonna be participating with the payroll. Right now, we don't have any organization of where things are supposed to be stored in our office for documents that are delivered to us from other departments. There's no folders. There's no affairs folder, there's no uh, records folder, there's no trend folder, there's no any folder. There's even if we're talking even the elections officials that uh, are storing the party chairs that deliver documents to the. Good Tuesday, they're even here when they think they're finishing. There's no records of these things. So. I need this detail, we're gonna, we're gonna have a person to come in and and uh, get these under control, okay? Um, if this is anybody that is, and I am interviewing right now, I'm being very transparent with this. I'm letting them know the risk. There's a risk that if they come in here, uh, and I don't make it in here, Kim may wanna change her mind and. They'll have to agree to that. And if that's the case, then she changes her mind. And maybe she wants to hire her own room to room with people, whichever, if that's the way it is. So I I think as long as that transparency is there. And uh, that that person is definitely necessary. It it is the way that's gonna help us to stop making mistakes. And get our organization to improve.
Fortunately, the this continuation role has been learning more and more about. So I think if a lot of the deals still, he needs this support. Now we should probably give it to him because we're gonna continue on this role after the election. They're probably gonna need that anyway. I don't think it matters whether or not he is in the office or somebody else is in the office. Uh, I think it sounds like it's a, you're a short, you're a short one, but if you stay out of the mission. And uh, you're in a job just a long ago, uh, I think to deliver services and take care of things. And the efficient order and that thing, I think this is part of that thought that so I'm I'm.
I would just clarify your comments a little bit. So if I'm a new candidate, I'm coming into a flat heart job. At the one county office and I. You're telling us the candidates where you you may or may not be the auditor from that, like you said, transparency. That's, those are the conversations you're having. People won't be blindsided by the fact that they're here and two weeks later they're lost. So you are, you will be having that discussion, but remember.
I am, and I'm also discussing this with the team. Basically, I want them to be uh, interview this person, be sure they're a good fit for me. Both that, if this does happen that I don't make it in there, it may be more likely that Kim will allow this person to stay in there if you're along with team and everybody knows.
Your most, your your most used staff, your staff are involved in the process.
I I did let them know that I'd I'd have to make sure that they would be part of this and if anybody had a red flag. And they had good reason uh, to not interview this candidate or something. You know, we're all looking through the candidates right now. Uh, and and making sure there's there's an interview input aside because uh. It it's not gonna be a good fit for a team. And we're not gonna interview those people that wants to be do uh, given the option and anything so.
And uh, sorry to talk about that shit. I was thinking about that last. And, uh, sorry to talk to you all that you, I was thinking about that last few days, or my one year, so. Okay.
I thought we might have to be discussing.
Okay, so is our motion to, I, I would move through both. Uh, the full-time ARPA provision that I'm. Uh, we'll call please.
McIntyre.
Um.
Snow.
Hi.
Peter.
Um. But the motion passes, thank you very much. Uh, item number eleven is considered approval for stealing change on one hundred fiftyth avenue between Highway ninety two. And G thirty six highway, and on Jersey Street from one hundred fiftieth avenue to Indianola State running, possible action.
This is east of Aniola, starting in Greenfield, we go down to pavement, that's on Jersey Street. Aniola has the city limits, speeds on, so we're just like seventy, one hundred fifty of. Uh, one hundred fifty of those around six hundred cars a day now, very busy. You know, perhaps every town, learn the speed limit, makes sense for safety aspects, so.
Let's see, currently, the current speed limit, and they give the.
It's not speed limit, so by, it's fifty one miles an hour. And the high traffic makes it difficult to keep washboards and poples out of there, it's lowering the speed, and just make it safe for the traveling popular.
Questions, then? We want you to approve this vehicle change on, if, if that, now we might, two hundred and thirty six highway, not thirty street, one hundred fifty, that one to the. Okay, that motion is acceptable.
McIntyre.
Yes.
Snow.
Hi.
Peter.
Hi, motion is approved. Uh, we have the motion to receive power reports from that that bears.
I have the motion to do one more time, or do you want?
I'm sorry, I did that motion a little quick and maybe a little quiet.
Okay.
We have the motion, a second, we'll call please.
McIntyre.
Um.
Snow.
Hi.
Peter.
Hi. As approved. Uh, super agent report, obviously, quickly, we've had long meetings, so I'm going to refer the group. Uh, had facility, we had two facilities committee meetings, there's a lot of exciting things going on, so with this committee right now, we're trying to figure out our lease, um, out of the uh. C I C S building, trying to figure out what to do with West D X building, and uh, we really got into. The administration building, potential remodels, and potential positioning in certain departments. Um, we'll be rolling that out before supervisors in um, in a couple of weeks. A lot of good work is there, a lot of discussions, this is hard stuff, because there's a lot of work needed for us to do this stuff, and like, to really narrow down the priorities, what's important, and. And figuring out the space and needs of departments, which departments are going to grow, there's a lot of things that are just, a lot of factors and variables that are hardly defined, but we're getting there for the product. Um, I remember I T, we discussed potentially implementing the new policy, and uh, I think John has taken a look at it. But it's basically a policy that allows I T to really have an older inventory on who gets access to our network. And, well, I think we, we know that's what happens, but there's nothing policy that um. That I'm aware of, that, that directs that. Yeah, so I think there needs to be some contact at once, we had an issue with uh. With uh, communications a few weeks ago, uh, where, we had a subcontract, the, the one that come in with training, but they need an access to our network, and they need access under a certain platform. That I T consider very dangerous, be very uh, highly sensitive and easy to uh, easy to break down our security. So there was a big discussion going back and forth, and really, it was like, who has the authority to say, you know, who makes that decision when there's conflict and you're not making? So uh, that policy, we come forward in this work session, we just lay it out before you see what your thoughts are. I wasn't, I, I was all there, just a couple of meetings to talk about communications, potential restructure, we had that, we, we weren't involved in. Um, discussions continued relative to that, and I think that's a way to talk about it. And so that, that's my word.
Well, I, I'm kind of meeting with the herd of the, which is the heart of Iowa, real council authority, um. This last week, um, we talked through several issues that are impacting, you know, one of the concerns that we have. We're very dependent here on one county upon herd, uh, for special transportation for um. People who are in more confined residence, um, maybe not elderly in particular. And so we heard of transportation system is very important for us, we are the one that is, that, that participates in this uh, here. Um, the herd of group are looking for uh, some new facilities for their, us, in front of there, they're talking up in East of Boone County, the Austin Jazz family. And so uh, we did talk about the Marion Warren area, everything works as well there, we are. I will say this at this point, we are well served by herd, to, that's their ability, their able to do. Uh, feed is also uh, very important. And part of the problem, David and Brad, seeing the birth of the children, part of the, y'all see, we have the, the ability to replace the vehicles is very, very difficult. So we are, every meeting, we have the herd, it's doing, can't get the parts, or we're having to get parts to fix, but then keep it going, definitely because of the soul, so. Um, there's a lot to say about herd, but it is important, I think, to have worked for us, it's something that we probably still remember. Our impact meetings, uh, did happen this past month because of, um, the great effects of children, so. Uh, I'll have more to do on, uh, that later, um, and uh, we do have upcoming meetings with uh, uh, the folks from the uh. M P L regarding, uh, the kind of likes.
Thank you very much.
Okay, well, um, my colleagues, we have two work sessions, um, one of our, I participated on telephone. Um, also attended the National Association of Counties in the conference, uh, that was quite intimidating at first, um, there were many at the conference from much larger counties than one county. However, I assume relations, how much of happiness from them was, and as a supervisor of a smaller population, I have the privilege of part of many respects. In our becoming summarizably, a lot of recognition, I understand that I could offer as well. Um, the conference addressed many issues, and some of the workshops I was able to attend were fire suppression, and the new build, uh. Oil costs and processes, mental health issues and variables, building financial partnerships, budgets for money, and pensions and costs, and I wouldn't want to, um, be using as well. And um, and I also spoke with Zommy, who, if you're helpful.
Thank you very much, it's wonderful. Okay, next time on our agenda is of input, uh, is anybody from the public with a mic to speak to the board supervisor, if you can talk about anything, like this, the exception of things that were on our agenda today. Anybody from the public with a mic address board supervisors? Our next meeting is, uh, August fifteenth, two thousand one three, nine thirty AM. And I like motion to adjourn this meeting. We'll call.
McIntyre.
Um.
Snow.
Hi.
Peter.
Hi. Thank you so much for attending our meeting, great meeting.